Okay, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council for November tenth, twenty twenty five. The meeting is held in the council committee room and or chambers at thirteen ninety-four Pine Avenue in Trail BC. And you can attend via Zoom or live meeting commencing at two o'clock for committees the hall and then immediately following by a closed council meeting. And we convene in at six o'clock for the regular council meeting. So the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the event. Is there something that? Thank you. Is there a secondary? All those in favor? Thank you. That was carried. And I need a resolution to resolve into the committee of the whole place. Showing a second. Thank you. All those in favor? That was carried. Um, so today we do have some departmental verbal updates. And the first one is from the airport manager, Enrico Moly. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. So Charles provide a brief update for the airports for the month of October. Start off with some passenger numbers. So October saw a total of one thousand nine hundred and nine passengers coming to the airport, which is up from one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven passengers this time last year. In October, we had eight flight cancellations in total. Two were planned maintenance for Pacific Coastal and six were weather-related cancellations. From those six, we had two bus days where they shuttled people from the airport to Penn State and then return transporting a total of these six passengers. Moving on, like I stated, the shuttle service that has commenced on October first, Pacific Coastal, and will run until March, the end of March, I believe. The way the system works on that is when two flights are canceled during the day, they will shuttle people to Penn State and then return. If only one is canceled due to weather, then they will not show them. So it pretty much has to be the whole day has to be low weather cancellation event. The airport is completely ready for winter operations. We've conducted all our preventative maintenance and all the witness. So when the weather starts to change to snow, it's myself, my team will be ready. Transport Canada conducted a site visit for due two days to audit the airport's safety management system. That was back in September. Within thirty days, they have provided compliance or no compliance finding for the airport. So we did receive word from Transport Canada that we were fully compliant. And with one observation that the airport is currently addressing, it relates to old airport markings on the runway that kind of resurfaced that were painted over. So it's, it's, you know, tackling. We've received a lot of great feedback from the business business event that was held on the fourteenth. That also saw the regaining of the airport terminal building to be done routinely terminal, terminal as well. Yeah, lots of people commented saying it was a great event. So again, lots of good feedback. And lastly, the airport again this year was planning on applying for a British Columbia Air Assistance Program grant for a facility master plan or, you know, there's an airport master plan. Last year we did apply. We were not successful due to limited amount of funding that was available to the province. Too many people had applied. We've come into a little bit of an issue here again this year because on November third is when they released their guidelines as well as the entry, the intake of the grant applications, which will run into January sixteenth. Previously, it was facility master plans eligibility is for facilities serving the population of fifteen thousand, which we met that criteria. This year they added an extra caveat. They're saying also has to be greater than fifty kilometers by road to the next larger aviation facility for eligibility. This creates an issue for us right now because Castlegar is less than forty kilometers by right now. So I brought this up to the executive director of the British Columbia Aviation Council, which is pretty much an advocacy and we, we are we submit with them annually on, on collaborate with them. They collaborate with other airports throughout BC. So we're part of the membership with them. They're going to be addressing this within the coming weeks. They're going to be going to the B cap program and trying to get some more clarity and advocate for us to find out, you know, where did this come from? Why was their consultation done? Because right now the way it stands, we're not eligible. Right? So but more to follow on that. That being said, we have to look at the fact that up to thirty-five thousand would be available towards a facility master plan that we, if we were to continue with our plant master plan next year, that will have to go through council to find that, that, that extra funding that make up for the extra thirty-five thousand. And that concludes my update. And I'm glad to take any questions, Sujar.
Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Hassan. Thank you. Mr. Martin, could you shed a light just on the other opportunity for grant application through the infrastructure and how that works with the master plan as well?
So, so generally, when, yes, so through, so there's different streams for a de-cap grant application. The one we're going through specifically for a facility master plan, they also have infrastructure or airside and groundside infrastructure improvements. Generally, that way that works is the way I've seen it by looking through the application process is if you want to do an infrastructure project and provide grant or request granting for it, you have to have a valid master plan that identifies, you know, those infrastructure improvements that you're planning on making. Which right now we're being aligned with current master plan that we have, which is still from two thousand thirteen and is really outdated at this point in time. So it kind of it's difficult in the sense of trying to get even approval towards that for infrastructure streaming at this point. I'm not saying it's impossible, but they're going to definitely have some questions. You know, why they want something that's not capturing their master plan? And then the other problem we have with this is the guidelines weren't released until November third. And the intake started on November third. So it's not like something where we could have looked back and said, say, in August or September, say, hey, it looks like we're not going to be available or eligible for funding. Maybe we should look towards an infrastructure grant. Now it's a little bit late in the game to, you know, do RFPs and all those kinds of things and try to figure out if we wanted to go for a grant. Because the intake is only until the sixteenth of Jan. But these are all issues that I brought up with the British Columbia Aviation Council, who's going to have to get on our behalf get some more clarity. So like I said, there's really going to follow along. Does that? Thank you, Claire, for your.
Okay. So any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here today. And up next, we have our communications and events manager, Claire Samuel. Thank you. Through the chair, a little update from October. Of course, Spooktacular was another successful event. We have so many great partners and the movement that loves to show their civic pride. Many people came out, filled out the Bailey Theater for the magic show. So that's a success. We published eleven media releases and public notices in October, which meets, if not exceeds, a goal for the department at this time. It's pretty high volume. And each one of those is resulting in multiple media clippings earned media for us. So that in turn costs us less, of course, in advertising. And we're really, really grateful for the commitment of all the local news reporters to telling stories about things that are happening in Trail and things that are relevant to local residents. So big thanks to them. Our social media continues to grow and perform well. Two hundred and sixty-three thousand views in October, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand of those organic, so not paid. So that's a significant amount. Just having a look, two hundred and one reshare of our content, two hundred and eight pieces of content, which puts us higher than others in quantity of publishing, I guess you could say, in our category. I continue to review all of our demographics and fine tune the strategy to meet the goals. Nine hundred and forty links clicked, links clicked in the last twenty-eight days. It's a really great metric showing people are clicking to learn more at our website or wherever we're pointing them, which is almost always our website. So we are operationally working on changing some software for our media library for more efficient in access and use of all of the photography and video assets as well as including metadata so that we can easily pull images of a specific person or things like specific event or location. And working on updating the seasonal kiosk signage around town. Spooktacular is still over on the bridge. I know it's, it's, it's in, it's in the process of being updated to some public skating, free public skating signage. Of course, there's lots of kiosks around town and I'm working on a plan to get them all, all updated according to kind of where they're at based on priority. Some of them look a little bit better than others. Website RFP is coming for your review as well as that explore one hundred and twenty-five years of trail campaign. Also supporting the rollout of the current OCP renewal phase. There's lots of other requests for communications and public engagement across the department, something I wanted to explore as a public engagement add-on to the website for accountability and transparency of all the different public engagement things that we are engaging on. And also always connecting with different local creative professionals looking to support nonprofit organizations through the Bridge Lights and things like that, TMC marquee. Looking ahead, we've got the Holiday Magic Parade with DTIC on December twelfth, five thirty to six thirty PM downtown. Looking at event plans, budgeting, content planning for twenty twenty-six. We have a finance department campaign to sign up for pre-authorized payments of utility and taxes coming up and also a story in the new year with staff updates. Yeah, lots of policy and procedure updates in process too. So that's what's current in communications events. Okay, thanks. Is there any questions or comments? No, thank you. No, okay, thank you. I think Director of Corporate Services.
Yes, thank you. The department's been quite busy for the last month since we last spoke. As you can see, we have a number of reports before council today on today's agenda that we've been working through. Another item, earlier this year, we had a new lease agreement template created. And so as we're working through new lease agreements or negotiating existing ones that are coming to the end, we're moving those to an updated format. So there's just some time making sure that we're transitioning all of the appropriate information from the past agreements into the new ones. So we've been working steadily through that. Another item we've been working on is our agenda and minutes software that we use as staff. Trying to get some modules of that software that we do use or we haven't used in a while back up and running. So one item is that is action tracking. So for after action reports and for councils resolutions, so that we're following up and ensuring that we're completing any as scheduled. And to that, we're actually trying to find some better efficiencies within those software that is available to us that we haven't been using. For instance, this is more for staff, but for them to be able to doing our staff reports within that software itself, which then formulates into an approval workflow and then into the agenda itself. So we're working through that. I would see with getting that implemented and staff training in the next month to two months, seeing that come to fruition if all goes well. Another item, I know it's seems like a ways away, but we are starting on the twenty twenty-six election prep. So we're working to review our elections bylaw. There, we're awaiting some changes to the legislation to the Local Government Act that could affect the, our elections bylaws slightly. So we're just waiting for those formulated changes to make sure anything is up to date before it comes to council. And we're developing our work plan as a, as a department to make sure we're on track through the year with a number of items to and goals to hit throughout the year to stay on track. Yeah, yeah, last, our bylaw department is still continues to be busy. Since the weather's been changing, the first item on their list is to attend the Riverfront Center where there's some individuals that amp up fronts. And so our bylaw staff is making sure they're there when they first come in, just to meet those individuals along before the facility is opening up. That's all I have to say.
Any questions? Sorry, did you say you were having an app for tracking resolutions?
Yeah, and yeah, so within the software, we can create action tracking based on resolutions that come out of minutes assigned to staff who is responsible. And then we can ensure that we're following up on that as management. And if there is due dates, making sure that those are met.
Okay. Okay, um, thanks, David. And we'll move on to the museum archives and visitor center manager, Sarah Benson.
Hello. Okay, some key accomplishments and milestones. We have, or the approvals for the phase one of our deaccessioning process have occurred at committee level with the Historical Society. So the formal motion to approve what we plan to take out of the collection will happen at the November twenty-fourth meeting. And then we'll begin the formal public notification process. Phase two will tackle our sports register and phase three will address the archival register. And we see this as a three-year, three-year process. We prioritize the artifact collection, even though it was the smallest in terms of number, but it's the largest in how much space it takes up. Operational updates from the process of curating a DC Games exhibit for the Sports Hall of Memories, and that should be completed by you and, and on the in the forklifts along the wall, the gymnasium wall. The twenty twenty-six calendar content will go to our designer this week and hopefully on the shelves for the first week of December. And it will be a commemorative issue, sell in one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the incorporation of the city. So we've been careful in the months we've, there's a photo per decade, basically. It's kind of cool. Claire and I are busy with the Trail one hundred and twenty-fifth plans, which you're going to hear about soon. We finalized, we are finalizing specs and costs for the twenty twenty-six community guide, which is going to be a slight departure from our standard visitor guide that we issue at the visitor center. And we'll work with Black Press again. We've been experiencing some issues with tenting these past few weeks, as David mentioned. We do see this as a trend, as the weather gets colder, this does tend to happen. And it's been raining here. Bylaw has been extremely supportive when we're unable to move people along. And usually we are, but it's been a little bit, a little bit more cumbersome with these past few weeks. We did suffer some vandalism as well. We believe it happened the night that a couple of those other windows were broken downtown weeks ago. And that's been replaced. It was in our front window exhibit, just a small crack at the bottom, but probably enough that once it got cold, it would have done some, some damage. And I'll be submitting a grant request through the federal Canada Summer Jobs Program to support the hiring of our summer students. Every year they seem to mainly move the deadline earlier and earlier. So it's odd that we're, you know, applying in November for often we don't hear until May of the next year. So obviously oversubscribed. Capital Project update, our new early industry exhibit case is in production. So we finalized everything. It's, it's being manufactured right now. It should be installed before the Christmas break. And we are currently finalizing the revised vinyl graphics on the wall that have to be changed just to accommodate in the case of, it'll cover some of the old content. Community engagement, our programming continues to engage the community with a regularly scheduled outreach at long-term care. We also presented at Sanctuary this much, this month, and the fair's Better At Home program at the Legion. Spooktacular, as Claire mentioned, was another busy event. And this year we partnered with the Mexican community, Kootenay boundary, and they mostly live in Castlegar. But we created a day of the dead altar. I hope some of you were able to see it. And we did have a few community members come in and bring images of their loved ones to place on the altar. It was really pretty. And we're pleased with the outcome. The door count for the day was around the eleven hundred mark, which is higher than Silver City Day, Saturday of Silver City, which is kind of our benchmark. So spectacular continues to be an important event. And we get it, it's a little colder. So people are probably coming in and it's easier to take your costumes off in Washington, Port of Potty. So it's true. Yeah, it was a great day. We continue to support the collection development and oral history program at the Columbo Lodge. And we've wrapped another three interviews with the men's lodge. So we're at a total of thirty interviews that I've conducted with the older men of the, of the Columbo Lodge. And thank you to counselors Butler and Benson, who attended Saturday's trail launch of Greg Knestoros' new book, The King of Sandin. We were pleased with the turnout. We did some great sales that day. And he's such an engaging speaker and we're, we're lucky that he's back in Trail. So looking ahead, Trail one twenty-five will be a priority until the end of this year and certainly the end of next. We'll be supporting the Nurses Union with some electrical needs on November twenty-fifth for the Domestic Violence Awareness Walk. And we invite you to the NO Riverfront Center Holiday Open House. And we've scheduled that for Saturday, December sixth. Santa will be reading stories this time. So we've, we've added on to his regular duties and we'll have the St. Michael School Choir and the Roslyn Glee Club again singing for us throughout the day.
And that's it. Awesome. Any questions? Melissa Benson.
Thank you through the chair. For the deaccessioning program, what does community input look like? What design, you know?
It's, it's community notification. Yeah, yeah. So we will make a public announcement, the Historical Society and with our support will make a public announcement that they will be divesting of some items in the, in the collection. And then we make that public through listservs with other institutions ethically and through the Canadian Museum Association where we follow their deaccessioning standards. So it then is offered to other, other institutions nationwide. This goes out into the listservs, we're part of a couple of networks. So typically items don't go back to donors. That's not an ethical way of doing things, particularly if they've received a tax receipt for it. But they are eligible to buy them back at fair market value, which I think the Historical Society would probably like to look into that. It would be a lot of admin. So it's something Addison and I will be looking at next week, once we get there.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Sarah. See you in a sec. Okay, on to our finance department report, Mr. McClure.
I think that for right now, I'm just going to defer to the fact that we're going to go through daily budget here. But there's, you know, again, we're in the normal process of gearing out for the year end. Preparations are being made and just even getting out to those that are responsible for vendors and making sure we get the cash table in a time. So all those kinds of yes, ongoing sort of procedures that we have in addition, trying to make sure that staff are getting all of their vacation requests and so that we can make your end as quick and as tidy as possible. So we'll be doing some, start on some utilities budget today. By the, you know, by December or anything, having a quick look at what one twenty-six looks like, but you know, most of that budget work will get done in the twenty twenty-six month. If the, if the role outside, so that's about all we do have. But I think we have had maybe since the last time that we have our new AP clerk position filled. And so that's working in, working well and getting some cost training going. So it's nice to be up into a full complement of staff.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McClure? Okay, then we will move on to our staff delegation, Explore One Hundred and Twenty-Five Years of Trail. And this is a presentation from the Museum Archives and Visitor Center Manager and the Communications and Events Manager. So we're up. At this point, looking at a re-grant here, we're looking at a little bit of an update for the year of twenty twenty-six. This is going to be a year-long campaign that has multiple different touchpoints. We're going to go through here today for you. And hopefully culminating in a mosaic of trails past and present in the end. There's a lot of things happening in Trail next year and we want to take advantage of all the people that are out and engaged. Sarah?
But in that vein, we recognize there are a lot of things going on next year. So like from literally every season, it's going to be a lot. We don't want this to be burdensome on the community, potential sponsors, funders and staff. So we are trying to take advantage of these critical masses of people and undertake what we're kind of calling covert community engagement. So we'll be talking to people. And yeah, we'll dive right into that. So I need to go to the next slide. So these are the key messages we're defining. Again, you can see we're, we're using taglines that already exist. And we don't really feel that we've ever really utilized the explorer trail tagline, which has been around since I think twenty or two thousand and four, two thousand and five, when the promotions committee was first, was first struck. And it's a great call to action. So we thought, okay, let's dive into that a little bit more. Define your trail, explore your trail, celebrate your trail. We want to use these calls to action throughout this campaign.
So here's a sample of the visual identity. And of course, I wish it was a little bit bigger for you all to see some of these MAFU designs.
We're cutting out on that side. Do you remember you switched the?
So of course, we've been waiting for some new banners downtown, street post banners. These are the designs that we're proposing that showcase the different aspects here. We've got industry forging, heartwarming with no name under spaghetti, you know, diamond dazzling on the ball pitch, trail blazing, hockey, always dancing, river flowing. It's still cutting off a little.
Yeah, this is mountain roaming, always dancing, making use of always. Like there's many different types of dancing we're on.
Yeah, everyday caring. Some of these designs are still draft and in, in progress of adding some more detail, as you can see, like this hockey player versus this is a little bit more flock, but these are really just bold visuals, bright colors. And again, very active, active voice. So talking about what's happening now and who's here now exploring your trail here today with also nods to all the different things that build this community up beyond our heritage and best.
Okay, so element two, this is that community engagement piece we were talking about. This is define your trail. So we're calling it right now Trail Tales. And this is where we plan to use oral history techniques to interview greater trail residents. We see trail as sort of a conglomerate. There are a lot of people that are here every single day that maybe don't pay taxes here and live here. But they certainly contribute to our community. We don't want to be exclusive. We want to consider meaningful lines of questioning that serve to define what it means to be from trail. And we want to encourage reflection, comparatives, you know, what were you like then? What are you like now? And experience-driven responses. So to do this, we are looking to invest in some portable recording equipment, perhaps some sound dampening and a branded tent for use at things like markets and the multitude of community events that are going to attract a lot of people next year and people that are probably going to be in a celebratory mood already. Not that we are going to restrict people. We want, we recognize there's good, bad, ugly to be, to be discussed here. And we don't want to stifle any of that, but we want to provide a forum. And when this equipment is not in use, we see a great home for this equipment in the museum and the galleries. We are swapping out some of our multimedia, which is just TVs right now that are on a consistent loop from an accessibility perspective. It's not great. So we're thinking a pod that people can go in and watch the, the digital assets that we, that we present, but then can also record with the prompts that we would have person to person at, at, at these engagement events. So how we're going to do it, compile and train the team of interviewer, interviewers, set that schedule, attend as many twenty twenty-six community events and encourage participation. We want to encourage self-submission as well. So we want to look at a way that folks can, with the prompts that we'll provide, record themselves and then upload videos that of course would be moderated and not placed anywhere. They're just going to be gathered. And again, we want to be inclusive and we don't want to talk to just the usual suspects that, you know, we know will be more than happy to contribute and participate. We want to get, we want to get more. We want to go a little deeper. And then what? We would be compiling this data for regular reporting to you. We would be sharing videos online and through social media. And we would be again, building and defining this legacy project, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. And yes, we have release forms. So folks, if they're willing to contribute with their words and their likeness, they would be signing their rights, shared rights of that content to us for use in future projects and research.
I also see a few interactive components at this traveling tent, which could be branded very bold and colorful with the visual identity of this campaign. Things that'll take homes for people and other ways, maybe submit a word that trail means to you. What does trail mean to you submitting your most common word? Or even just a photo if you're not game to get in the booth and tell your story.
Okay. So these will all be digitally archived. We already have archival policies in place to support our digital records, significant time. Significant time and financial investment back in twenty twenty two went into digitization and how we accept born digital records. The world's different now. People aren't taking photos. With natives printing photos and donating physical copies of things anymore. It's just not what's done and we're adapting to that. So we know already how to treat this and we've been kind enough to be given a, or we've been given kindly our own drive on the city's network. And it takes up a lot of space, but we have a lot of digital assets. We digitize nearly everything so that it is. We can research from it and it can be accessible. So we know what to do with that. It would all be accessioned to form part of the collection, of course, with participant releases, which would form like our gift agreement. And this is going to be some rich content for our final project, future marketing, storytelling and research. And this type of work already forms part of the annual museum and archives work plan. It would just be yet another collection that we would then process. So in terms of staff time for something like this, not too tricky. And we know there are going to be a lot of events next year and we're lucky that June fourteenth, which is our actual birthday. Nineteen oh one is on a Sunday this year. So for those of you who don't know, I've been working with John Darkpansel again on volume two of A Trail to Remember. The first one was published in two thousand fifteen. We've expanded the size a little bit. It'll be a companion to to volume one and it'll occur Sunday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty six at Gyro. So we'll do something kind of small, but that can be that celebratory event where we're dedicating not just to the book, but to the birthday as well. So there's something already kind of going on and it's not going to require a ton of resources. We've already got something, something to do, probably some speeches. We'll invite some people. The pre-sales of this will likely offset the initial investment, so we'll we'll start with a thousand copy print run because we certainly sold that many in the last one. And if there's some basic costs that we have right now. So this is a museum-focused project, so limited sitting resources aside from, you know. Tables, microphones, those sorts of things. I don't see this as being super successful at this. Okay, and if any of you've been in the museum in the last little while, in our temporary gallery, we have this giant Columbia Basin Trust unit up right now. These were created for the two thousand twenty three symposia that were held. And they document some of the really unique and large-scale Columbia Basin Trust projects that they had completed over the last twenty eight years at that time. And right now, we see this as a great tool that we could potentially place out in the mall. The content that we're gathering can be used in this, in this, it's called page turner display. If you can see on here, there's a photo here, but you can turn that bar around and then on the back is some descriptor of of what the image is. So we would rebrand this with the with the visual identity that Claire's already spoken through about and. Rotate this throughout the year. It's just another way to keep people engaged and to keep us engaged in the project. And so we'll capture images of trail tales and participants throughout the year. And we think a place like the mall would be a really, really great place, again, not just focusing on just trail downtown. Engaging the the Winnita Business District as well.
Great. There's something new we can try to do, which is add augmented reality to two D murals. And that would mean when you hold your phone up like this person is, it could activate different motion, sound, storytelling. And it can just really, again, use our current assets, but just bring them up to something more modern. With kind of technology and heads, public art, you can share it, it's educational, it's fun. And we can also track engagement metrics on it, so we could see if it's being used a lot. Do we want to use it some more? Do we want to just, you know, start small? And then if people are really, really receiving it well, we could expand it to do more murals. We have so many. So we also have to plan for our content refreshes or any tech support beyond the launch. But I've been talking, I was thinking with the different companies, including a startup in Montreal. That's like very, very keen and interested in our town's history and supporting this project. So I think it's a really neat way. I mean, this this mural, a lot of these murals have been positioned in places where they. Are exactly.
Where it happened.
Where it happened, right? And and this one, for instance, always speaks to me, that the tells the stories of the floods. Which has been a huge change since this wall was built and since the dam, the Keely Side Dam was built as well. And quite timely and relevant today as well with all of the CRT talks. So I would propose personally these two as the first two to explore AR-ifying.
And the sternmiller.
And the sternmiller.
The moving cattle, yeah.
Yeah, yes. So this is another way to explore your trail and get people interacting again with these murals that we have. Another way to use technology in this way, there's a company called On This Spot. They do scavenger hunts. And you would be able to do a citywide adventure, goes year year round for all year long. Kind of helping people discover to the hidden gems, which Sarah knows all of. So we we have, we have the historical sites. Again, that's fun, education and interactivity to the Explore Your Trail one twenty five. You just download a digital map or pick up a printed copy and you can go along, complete challenges to get points or stamps. Gain entries to win prizes. Tent activations, of course, would, Trail Tales tent activations would have bonus stops. And again, it just encourages deeper connection to our heritage. It gamifies learning. It gives opportunities for sponsorship as well if they want to sponsor a stop. And creates again charitable moments for social media and for our tourism promotion. And for our digital. Election.
All right. Okay, so this is sort of an explore and celebrate. We're giving you some examples of some higher quality magazines that exist right now. You probably all see the Artrus F thirty and that's at Cootie Mountain Culture Magazine, which is no longer in print. We want to, as I said before, replace the usual visitor guide to something longer, using.
Well, they're here.
The more, thanks there, the more contemporary visuals, especially the investment clerks made in photography over the last couple of years.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's our visitor guide right now.
So of course, we want to celebrate the 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 history, but we want, this is painful. We want the historical editorial to be a little bit briefer. We want a strong. And future opportunities of of trail. That's what we want the city to, we want to draw people here. It's hard of doing both, guys. Keepsake, it's a higher quality paper and imagery. Hopefully something we'd be proud to have on the coffee table and commemorative, hopefully to inspire more ad investment from our community. Maybe it's a congratulation city trail or we've been in business here for fifty years, you know, it's a way to show off as well. This has province-wide distribution as part of the visitor center and Destination B C's visitor center network. We are part of a large distribution scheme, basically. So we order and ship from this one distribution site. And we send thousands away. And of course, we want to retain our partnership with Black Press, who does print this for us. They typically do all the sales as well. But we see this more of a collaboration in content design and ad sales, given it's such a special, especially here. But of course, we want to retain our our relationship with Black Press and show that we support their role in our community.
So all of this can culminate in what we're calling the Trail Through Time Mosaic. This could be a digital and physical art display of the videos and photos and the words that we've collected throughout the campaign. But ideally, we would be, we would be establishing what this looks like altogether throughout the campaign. We want to work with local artists on the final product and have this shared archive for future generations. It will combine digital innovation and physical art for maximum impact. And I just, this is a sample of what it could look like. But really, it's going to emerge as we go through this year altogether and engage up the community and what what that mosaic really is. Is it actually a mosaic? Or maybe that's just an umbrella term that we're using for something else entirely. That's something we'll arrive on together as a community. So advertising and promotion, we've got the street post banners, we've got regional billboards with different placements throughout. Signage throughout the trail, updating the kiosks, like I mentioned. Media outreach, we've got lots of contacts and local regional press to share feature stories, interviews, radio, TV. Digital and social media campaigns can share behind the scenes content, end-user generated content and stories. There's lots of opportunity for cross-promotion. Local businesses could sponsor a scavenger hunt stops or mural features for their own added visibility. We've got a huge event schedule that we can align with from annual city events to special events. And even things like the J L C graduation at Gyro would be a great day, I think, for us to set the tent up and start talking to people. And we also have talked about creating kits where you can host your own, celebrate one twenty five event. So maybe a restaurant wants to have a one twenty five theme night and they just can get a little kit that contains all the, all the things that they need to. Do this themselves, essentially.
And and show it off. Like, we don't want to tell anybody how to celebrate, like.
Yeah.
Here's, here's some.
Show us how you celebrate.
How you do it.
Of course, there's some promotional items, small tokens appreciation for participants that can serve as a reminder for their connection to trail. And we can, I mean, Sarah.
Oh, yeah, the gift shop. We can use the 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 gift shop for any retail sales and, you know, support revenue generation that way. So maybe not necessarily the city hall is a, you know, place we've got already well established. Yeah, financial considerations. This is going to cost a little bit. We'll need recording equipment and we're looking into what these pods could look like right now with our team in that account. A tent, branded clothing for the tenure, merchandise and promotional products, also anything merchandise-wise that we can, we can sell in gift shop. The technology contracts for the augmented reality, the scavenger hunt and video editing, the legacy project or mosaic. We're throwing those turns around, the signage, kiosk updates and the page turner display. And then, of course, the contingency and any administrative costs, but potential offsetting revenues, we have already. Heard some positive feedback from the Columbia Basin Trust that if we present them with a menu, they will, they can pick and choose what they think is going to suit their. Funding needs the best. We've got the Cootie Savings Community Foundation, we've got Borders B C, et cetera. We've got other additional grant opportunities we plan to to go after next year as well. And of course, sponsorship, but we do recognize that there are other events that are likely going to take priority. I imagine that the tree games is taking up a lot of, a lot of time for many downtown and and local businesses. But the Little League tournament as well, I think is going to generate a bit of, a bit of that sponsorship as well. But we think it's high visibility and again, it's a legacy building initiative, so we hope people are are agreeable to that.
And here's our timelines, snapshots. We're looking at launching on February twentieth at the Tres Mal Pinos Retro Night, which I've already secured. Us sponsoring that game. Hopefully, the new banners and home items will be up and ready to go then. We'll be also building out a tent and a story series beginning then. Scavenger hunt kickoff and the mural development. Hopefully, the murals would be ready for Silver City Days. In May, early May, peak event season begins, activations and media outreach throughout the summer and fall. Into the fall where we'll start beginning conception of what this mosaic legacy project is. Looking for artists to retain to help us with that work and in the two thousand twenty seven unveiling of the mosaic. And reporting out on on all the activities.
Okay, so we've, we've done a lot of, you know, consideration. We've, we've put a lot of consideration to some of these principles of what. Exploring one hundred and twenty five years of trail will mean in this campaign. So we want to put an emphasis on learning. But through heart, soul, experience and emotion, we want to hear, there's something very powerful about oral history and. Eye to eye, speaking with someone, there's a lot that goes on. A lot is said when you don't say anything at all. There's a lot to be said in a pause or inflection in voice. So those are the types of ways that we think meaning is really going to resonate. The use of dialogue and oral history techniques to inspire reflection. So we'll train ourselves a little bit. I've done a little bit in the last couple of years and it's, it's, it's a very touching experience to see someone be moved by reflection. And if this will uniquely measure effectiveness, so more of the qualitative aspects of the work that we're all doing. Over the efficiencies, which is, I know something you all have to focus on heavily, the quantitative aspect. The goal here is to improve as the organization and as a community coming together. So outcomes, this is a snapshot of trail at one hundred and twenty five years. Who's here? Who are we? Gain deeper insight into community values and aspirations. This is going to be a broad data set, as I mentioned, we're not talking to just the usual suspects. The information will be of benefit to staff, to the community and hopefully to future council decisions. Informal forum to offer feedback, feel heard and promote belonging and selfishly build on the archival collection for the future. Is there any questions?
Wow, that you guys have put that up.
And and we will be coming back to my numbers too.
Well, that's what we were expecting. We will be.
So just, we're refining and then seeing what, getting some response to sound, what we expect the cost to be. So appreciate, yeah, getting one twenty first operation going. So thank you, because it's one of the best.
Really fast. And that looks like Tracy has her hand up.
No, no.
Oh, do I? I just, I just want to say hi. That was great, John.
That was great.
Same time.
Thank you. So we have a few. Staff reports in front of us. We have the report on invoices paid for August twenty twenty five. I have report on invoices paid for September twenty twenty five. The bylaw enforcement report for October twenty twenty five. The building department report for October twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty five. And the Trail and District Public Library third quarter report for twenty twenty five. Is there anyone that would like to move these reports? Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? And that was Carrie. Thank you. So on to. Cootie Enterprise Limited. Tell me Belle, you've been so patient back there. And this report over to Melissa.
Yeah, so for council, a couple of things that came up, we had this proposal arrive. But we also had some new staffing come in as well that had experience in cemetery, in cemetery and the city of Castle. So part of that sort of spurred a conversation of, you know, what what does Home Depot operates well there and what kind of. What is the norm or what is the expectation? Because in most cases municipalities, public cemetery, obviously there can be private cemeteries. But on a public cemetery, one find out, I mean, you know, what is the, what is the usual process? The city already has, obviously for a long time, and this is a regional cemetery, so we get tax care funded. Everything already K D B, those that are part of that service. And as well, we have funding that comes from the fact that we sell cemetery plots, there's other services as far as in tournaments that mostly. More a cost recovery, not necessarily a profit center. So obviously, this is something that I think is valuable for the community of having cemetery. We need to have several locations. There is a legal requirement as well to have a care fund. And so you might say, well, what's a care fund? Well, the idea being is that once we. Put someone in the ground or in a home area, the expectation is that there's funding set aside and put into a reserve, which the city has. That will create in perpetuity funding for ongoing repairs, maintenance and that type of work. So that's a key component that all, all cemeteries are to have. Because the last thing we want to do is have a mismanagement and have someone, have a, you know, a cemetery go under. But anyway, that's the reason for the care. anyway, that's the reason for the care fund. And so as we worked through this and then did some other research, we certainly came to the conclusion uh, that although we appreciate very much that, uh, the Clark Service has come forward and provided these types of, uh, uh, common uh, operations for, um, the, the city of Trail and the surrounding areas of those that use it. Uh, it also became very apparent that that's actually less of, uh, you know, percentage wise or what the norm is. And because we already have the operations to sell a municipal plot very close to what the home area is or in that, in the cemetery, uh, we're already set up to be able to sell these and to be able to take on that type of operations. Uh, so investigating on kind of where, um, what it costs for a clombarium uh, and for the fact that what they sell for and knowing that this isn't a service that is commonly sold by, um, uh, or undertaken by municipality, it is the norm. Uh, I certainly put forward in my report that this would be something that we would be considering to do, uh, ourselves. So in doing that and making this something that we have at least, uh, three spots available for new clombarians. Uh, there is an investment upfront. We do have some funding for that to be able to cover that. Uh, then there's that cost recovery. And of course, this allows for, um, it's a cost recovery, it's not a profit center for municipality, but it does take the pressure off of taxpayers who are funding, um, the ongoing operations of the municipality, so, uh, cemetery. So I don't know if there's more questions or more detail that, uh, anyone would like to see on that, but certainly willing to discuss.
Does council have any questions? Go ahead, Councilor.
No question, I guess. Uh, oh, we told them.
Well, my question is, i- is there an agreement, um, a legal agreement in place between uh, Clark's Funeral Home and the city of
Well, there is on the previous unit that's, uh, based on the proposal is filling up. So there, that's the agreement. There's no other agreement. It's not like, uh, hey, you're now because of this, you're allowed to have all of them. That's why, uh, again, it was public funded to have the actual base created. And then, um, the service wasn't offered by the municipality and Clark's service came forward with an excellent idea, a service that was probably less undertaking, uh, back in those times when they first came on. So, uh, there's an investment. I, I don't know the decision. I don't know the history behind the whys on that side. What I do know is that going forward, uh, there's no commitment by the city to continue with Clark's and, uh, I would say actually in fact, uh, similar sort of situation in Passover, where there was a private entity and then uh, in doing their master plan at their cemetery, they said, hey, this is something that the municipality can take on. And again, of course, it's about, um, trying to if you've already provided a service similar on the variable, you could do columnarium and now you're not uh, you, you're now continuing to have those funds to be inside the cemetery, which is taking pressure off the taxpayer. That is one, uh, avenue or that's a window, I think, that most municipalities look at. Rather than a for-profit entity that is operating on public land. Not saying that the service wasn't needed or, you know, on the business case, I can't speak to any of that, but that's what uh, currently uh, in, in this, this opportunity comes open for us. It's a case that we were asked, do we want to do another agreement? If that's why we're being asked. There is no, uh, legal, uh, requirement to do so and hence why I am doing the investigation, staffing for a recommendation, so we have.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Senator Chair. Uh, I just see and I may be out of place, I apologize, but I just see a state of business.
I wonder if this isn't on the floor yet for discussion? Are we still questions or can we voice our opinions?
We need a mover and second or just a verface for the motion on the if you're dealing with the first motion.
Yeah.
Is that where you're, okay.
Yeah, just before we get into the discussion.
Is there someone that wants to, um, let me just see, let me get there, sorry. Uh, the first one is, uh, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm on the right one. Thank you. Yeah. That council decline the proposal from Cootney Enterprises Incorporated, um, Clark's Funeral Services to purchase and install a third clombarium at Mount River View Cemetery. So is someone to make that motion?
Yes, question.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments?
Councilor Benson. Okay. Would you want since, Councilor Martin went first, I'm happy for you to go first.
Are you sure?
Well, you actually made the motion, Ben, so if you want to speak first, then I think you'd move the motion.
I understand the rationale. Totally, but I just, I don't know if we're in the best position to take this on, especially with recent operational challenges. Um, for me, it's not about competition or control. It's about who can provide the most dignified, reliable and passionate service to our residents at probably the worst times of their lives. And I think that Clark's funeral service has served this community for over a century. And they partnered with the city and it's been very impactful. Uh, when the city approved the initial proposal in twenty thirteen, it was framed as a phased approach and you can even see it on the drawings. Um, so today's report says it could be up to five. Um, and although not like formally, um, agreed to, I think this drawing here from twenty thirteen shows an intent. Um, to allow Clarks to continue steering the space, um, provided the need and quantity of service remained. Um, I think they've successfully delivered two units with strong uptake and no indication of public dissatisfaction. Um, I think at a time of of loss, I think that continuity really matters. Um, especially in services as sensitive as an internment. So I would like to see the, um, Clarks continue to partner with the city and take care of it. Columnarium.
To be clear, um, if it is still, they can still do that work. It's just that the units would be bought through the city. So that's, that's the one component that just your work.
Yeah, no, I knew that. I just think it's, I just like it as it is. Councilor Martin.
Well, thank you, Senator. Sorry for the abrupt question there. I, like, I do, I was gonna say, and Councilor Benson made mention as well, it's, uh, it, it, it is a bad time for folks. It's a sad time. When that, when something like this has to happen, when they're having a loved one in one of these columbariums. Thank you. Close enough. Um, but I also think you might have answered my question already, Mr. McClure, about the city taking business away from a, a business where you're saying we're just going to build the facility. But Clarks is going to run the building.
No, no, the, the column itself, it's just that we've settled the units. Right? So again, whether or not to also bought them on behalf of the REED or if we're preparing, much like I said, we, we, right now, we sell a burial plot that would be within feet of the columnarium. So that's our responsibility. We do that. There, you know, whoever, um, has to go for their funeral services, obviously then go with, 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 with Clarks, right? So that's, it's, there's really no difference as far as how, whatever we are providing as a service. Like I said, if you saw my report, it is very, very low percentage of, uh, of columbariums that are operated by a private entity, a for-profit entity on a public owned cemetery. That's why, this is why this is not forward.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Senator Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. McClure, for your report. And on the surface, you know, you can see a forty-six thousand dollar net recovery. So you put your hat on what's best for the constituents, what would the people of Trail want me to do in this kind of case? Um, you know, do we favor a private enterprise or do we favor, um, what's a benefit for the entire citizens? But I'm going to lean into what, uh, Councilor Benson and Councilor Martin has already said, uh, forty-six thousand dollar net recovery. Yeah, I know it will help, you know, offset certain costs. But is that enough to, to not show support for local businesses? As Councilor Benson has mentioned, a multi-generational family ownership that's been in the, uh, city for over a hundred years. That does a great job in delivering the service. It's, it falls within their kind of current mandate. Um, so my support would be leave it as it is, the existing contract with, uh, Clark's Funeral Home, the, I guess the title is Cootney Enterprises Incorporated. Uh, I, my position would be to maintain the, the status quo and, uh, and let, uh, Bill Clark and his operation run the, uh, called, called barium. Thank you.
Councilor Benson, thank you. Um, I do just have a question and Paul, you might be able to answer this. Now, when those columbarium spots that are sold, I saw the breakdown of how much they cost. Is the ten percent that the city is recovering enough for that care fund to continue to maintain them and take care of them? I mean, maybe if, you know, we, we do want, you know, our local business that's done such a great job for so many years to carry on with these spaces. It does the numbers make sense for what we're, you know, the city's getting in return to make sure that air fund is adequately supported to make sure that we can take care of it and make sure that those buildings and that space is updated and kept enough.
Yeah, it's a great question. That's why, um, not only on the staff recommendation, this will city to take on the installment, but also to be looking at our bylaw. Um, and just the overall costs of, uh, whether it's our our plots for sale and the portion that goes into the care fund, because there is a concern that we are maybe not at a rate that is ensuring that the fund is sustainable and continues all opportunity. So that's certainly some of the work that, uh, we can do. And in fact, even if, um, you know, the recommendations are broken down as such that some will fall off the table depending on what happens with decision-making, but that staff still need to, I think, uh, be directed by council to move on to some of those questions that you're talking about.
So is there an opportunity though to raise, I think this is something that Councilor Hanson is um, alluding to, to raise those, um, prices to help cover the
That's, that's what I'm saying. So again, with councils, depending on which route you go, I think that is something that needs to be looked at regardless. And it has nothing to do with the columbarium. It has to do with the, uh, the, the plots that we sell, columbarium, the different services that we offer and are we getting cost recovery on them? So, yeah.
So we would have to do that, whether we, um, stay status quo or whether we, oh, yeah.
It's something I think that we should do as, you know, that, that's something that should be undertaken.
Okay, um, is everybody, uh, are you guys ready for the recommendation that's on the floor? To vote? Is there any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Just for clarification, sorry, where should I get confused on these words? The motion is that we decline the proposal?
Yes.
That is the motion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can read it out again if you would like. That council declined the proposal from Cootney Enterprises to purchase and install a third columbarium at Mountain View Cemetery. So all those in favor of declining? Okay. All those opposed? That was carried.
Uh, sorry, where should I, just a correction, that's defeated motion? And, um, does anybody want to be recorded as, as opposed? Everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, and the second one is that council directs staff to advance the acquisition and installation of a city-owned and managed columbarium and to update the Mountain View Cemetery bylaw number um, seventeen eleven associated the structure to authorize and regulate the sale of the columbarium niches. So is there someone to move that recommendation, please? Well, I'll move that. I can move it, Catherine.
Yes, she can.
Yes. So all those, and it, does anybody want to speak about that? Speak, uh, any comments? No?
Well, we've stated the first one. Do these, do we need to go through the studies?
Yes, so, um, it didn't have to be moved, but, um, it's, it's on the, on the table. So it would be the same process as the last motion. Um, the third motion, um, which are the two, um, subsequent, um, are not in a similar vein as the other ones. So this would be the recommendation to bring staff back um, to review just the rate structure of our bylaw and the care fund. Um, so that is not, um, necessarily related in separate motion. Um, but I will recommend to council that we will also need another motion, um, after these, um, for the approval of the request from Cootney Enterprises. So.
Yeah, it's something confusing. Cause we're basically, basically saying the same thing in both of those recommendations, right?
It, it is.
That one increase the price. Be structured.
Um, sorry, no, the, the second of the three resolutions is, uh, similar to the first. Um, but that is on the table currently. Um, so we will need some action by council on that, similar to the last motion. Um, but the third one is not related to the Columbarium proposal from Cootney Enterprises. Um, but related to the, um, rates within Mountain View Cemetery by law number seventeen eleven and is still for council consideration.
Okay. So all of those in favor of the recommendation two point two? All those opposed? Thank you, that's great. And the next recommendation is two point three. And that is that council directs staff to recommend any revisions to the Mountain View Cemetery bylaw number seventeen eleven related to plot columbarium and related cemetery services, oh, service rates to align with the current market conditions and service delivery costs. And further, that staff recommend an updated percentage contribution from the sale of burial, burial plots and columbarium spaces to the cemetery care fund, ensuring the funds provide continued sustainability. All those in favor? And that was carried. Thank you.
Well, Mary, we still need a motion to move with the proposal with
Sorry.
So again, two point one, so basically we would just swap out the line and say accept, then we need a motion.
Okay, so, uh, two point one, that council accepts the proposal from Cootney Enterprises.
Okay. So we're just
So it's the needles three that I would, yeah.
I can read it off. Uh, so the motion, uh, would read that council approved the proposal for Cootney Enterprises Incorporated doing businesses, Clark's Funeral Services to purchase and install a third columbarium at Mountain View Cemetery.
And that was Carrie. Thank you. Okay, we're going to, uh, move on to, um, the proclamation policy revision. Please, and that is, uh, David.
Hey, hey, worship. Um, so as council recall, uh, at the last regular, um, council meeting, two proclamations came before council. Um, and, um, before that, uh, council deferred staff to review the proclamation policy. Um, so we did a little bit of a look at that. Uh, as you can note in the report, uh, this policy that's currently in place, uh, proclamation policy number GG zero zero four point four uh, was first put in place in nineteen eighty-nine with the last revisions to this policy in October of nineteen ninety-nine. Just some, some background a little bit. So on average, um, in the years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four, uh, we issued on average seven proclamations each year. Um, however, currently we have issued five, council issued five proclamations, uh, with a further four under consideration. Uh, so in review, uh, we looked at a few of our neighboring communities, so Roseland, Castlevan Nelson, uh, for their practices around proclamations. Uh, and with those four communities, all, um, have a blanket refusal post, um, so that their proclamations don't come forth, council. Roseland and Nelson have a formal policy in place stating that, um, similar to the draft that is before council, um, today. Uh, Castlevan just has a resolution from the council noting that any proclamations that come into their corporate services, uh, is filed for information only. And that's it. They don't act on that. Um, outside of the greater trail area, um, or greater Cootney area, it's, there is still some proclamation policies in place, um, though some have started moving away from it, um, due to a number of different reasons, um, with unintended consequences of proclamations with, I think, be divisive, um, it could be alienating one group, um, without the intention to do so. Um, so that is why most of these communities have moved away from the proclamation policy, um, and moving towards this, um, policy that staff has drafted for new rear consideration. Um, I will note, uh, so the four, so the two previous proclamations that were before council at I will note, uh so the four, so the two previous proclamations that were before council at last regular meeting. Um and the two that we have received subsequently are would not follow under if if council were to create any changes under the policy. They would not, these four would not fall under the changes, um because that would not be approved until the next regular council meeting. Um it should be in December. No, sorry. End of November. Um but so those that are on the regular meeting this afternoon um are still under the old policy. And under consideration. Um so any changes council um is looking to make um would not be in effect until approved at the. Later maybe. If council has any questions?
Counselor Hammond said you look like you're thinking.
I just wanted to say thank you for doing the research on that. Um you know, I think one of these things with these policies, they can just. There's, everybody wants it to be a week or a month about a thing and a thing and different things and sometimes there's a lot of gray and what things. So I really appreciate the work that you've done, put into this report.
And it's, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to add that these are policies. So if there's one ofs, um an example to me would be the Robert Hampton Brady where we did a proclamation. Council can still do that. This is just, you know, a policy that the ones that we're getting on a regular basis. Would end. So, you know, uh there's always a chance for council to do one ofs. When they see that that's something that they would like to do. But a policy guides staff on the general day to day.
Thank you, Trace and um counselor partner.
Just a question, uh because I I think actually the original policy is a very good one. You know, it's stated, how would staff or even rejectable bring something like that to the attention council? Or maybe council's responsibility to bring up their wish to to stop.
I think it's a it's a team approach, right? I mean, coun- council understands, council can always bring whatever they like forward. Right through notice of motion. Um but, you know, count the staff. Understand the political sensitivities around a lot of these things. And so as a a senior staff individual. Um that's what we're we're paid to do is make sure that we are vetting all of these things. And making sure that it isn't one of those one-ups that we probably should bring forward. So um all. Requests that we do get would go into the reading file so that council can see. Um what has come in, but those sort of things should always go into the reading file because that is correspondence coming to mayor and council. And this doesn't stop people from doing the bridge lighting either, right? Which I think is is pretty. I mean, coming up so purple lights for domestic violence, I think that's pretty speaks.
Or you're gonna like the two very currently, I mean, if we're to accept a new policy. Uh support for the Ukraine, the moon, yellow lighting of the bridge would have been allowed. Because everything is political, right? I think that's what the council is, it's a representation to people. So if. If if there were six people on this council who didn't believe them. Ex religion, then they can throw it down, or if they want to support, they can. So I think that's what. The whole part. And this this policy has always been that way. Like, I'm not sure I've got to read this at a time. This is requested because it wasn't long that we had it. So um. It hasn't ever been brought up as long as I can remember. So thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just through the chair. I, you know, I I guess I asked it to be brought up, I think, council for for staff for the report. For me, it just promotes fairness. And I've done some Googling, you can do your own research. There are cases out there where. Proclamations were denied and people were offended and civil suits were, you know, there's, it it can create that. Messy, unnecessary uh situations for staff and for council. So this avoids it, and I think it's clean, it's. It's just an old proclamation policy and uh and it grows to me, my opinion, as was pointed out in the report, promotes fairness. And uh and that's why I appreciate the report and I support the uh the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so the uh, oh, sorry, counselor Benson.
Thanks for the report. Uh I just, I think that. I really appreciate, as you know, appreciate proclamations. I think they're a really cost-effective way that we can show. A bit of compassion and engagement with our constituents. Um like the report said, it requires minimal resources and it could deliver high impact. Um by publicly recognizing important causes and and cultural events. Um everybody has the right to say no, and what I appreciate about you as an example, council, council casual is even like our grant and aids. You always have like a clear reason of this is why I'm voting no for this and if whether it's like a religion or not, or whether it's a. Um non-for-profit or not, that's kind of your judgment for um granting aids. Um I just think that they can carry real weight for residents that everybody is being um seen and respected as part of our our narrative. So I just would like to see them retained as is under the old policy.
Okay, thank you, counselor Benson. Um if there's no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the um recommendation. And the recommendation is that council adopt the revised proclamation policy number G G zero zero four point four.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. And all those in favor of the revised proclamation? Counselor Cashell, are you supporting it or?
What was the question? Uh I made the motion and you put it and then we're we're voting on it. Yeah, I'll vote in favor of it if that's, thank you, sorry.
And those folks. Is that on the line?
No.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the regular council meeting schedule. A report from the legislative services clerk proposing the twenty twenty six.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused a bit. It's a tie, so what happens to that? We've never really had a tie before. Through the chair, sorry.
Sorry, tie voters are defeated vote.
Okay.
Must have majority for someone to be carried.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the.
So we have the report from the legislative services clerk proposing the twenty twenty six regular council meetings. The recommendation is that council consider it and resolve the uh. Twenty twenty six, where's you go to council meeting? Uh um schedule is presented. Thank you, counselor. Go ahead.
Just correct it on the twenty first of September. Is that why that if they have moved up the date, because that will be one of three members of council, and now we'll be returning from the. V C M.
I would just like to draw council's attention to the um recommendation by the C I O around that in the report. We were talking about changing that date to the twenty eighth and then canceling the meeting on October the fifth. That was just another way of. Yeah, because we're getting really close to uh advanced polls. And maybe we just want to not have any meetings in October.
What happened?
No, it's it's comedian, I just. Who, you know, is everyone thinking that's an okay idea or do we want that by a meeting in October?
Yeah.
October fifth is the latest we can do one. So it's either as. Counselor Butler said, move that up September date from the twenty first and have it, you know, on a Thursday or something. Or we change it to the next week in September, I believe that's the twenty eighth, and then cancel the Monday, October fifteenth meeting.
Yeah, I I actually uh support um Mr. Clark's recommendation there. Do, does council want me to read it out so you are have a clear idea of what's? It's just not, it's not in the recommendation. Right, so if I read it out. Go ahead.
Would you like me to read it out?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. The council approved the twenty twenty six regular council meeting as amended. To reflect a regular council meeting to be held September, I believe, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And uh no meeting October the fifth.
Okay, if someone to move that, all those in favor. Thank you, that was carried. And then we also have a report from the legislative service clerk proposing the uh twenty twenty six acting mayor's schedule. And the recommendation is that council approved this acting mayor uh schedule for twenty twenty six. So any questions or comments? Thank you, counselor partner. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. Uh we have a report from the general manager of corporate services providing the amended terms of reference. For the community safety task force committee. That in corporate with changes means that the April seventh. And the October fourteenth, for the um sorry committee double.
Uh yeah, thank you through chair. I don't think there's anything much to comment on. Uh all those highlights, I put them in red so you can see. What they came um went through, and I think that we captured them all. We've left anything out.
Okay.
Just a question.
Sure.
If I may, thank you to the chair. Uh we're we're going to be adding another interior health. Maybe just some uh verification or explanation of why we're adding another interior health representative to the committee. When I done some, I looked at the minutes and it looks like there's already five participants and you're. Hang on, maybe I'm I'm wrong. No, yeah, that, so I guess my question is with the chairs, why we're adding another interior health. Representative to the general, you know, to the community, to the workforce.
Go ahead, counselor Martin.
Uh thank you to the chair, counselor casual. We tried to streamline to uh account for. There's so many people from interior health, we wanted to narrow down. So these are the voting members. The other ones show up as guests. So if they come, that's their choice because it's a public meeting. Um and these are the ones that will be um asked to vote if there's motion brought forward. Does that make sense? Yeah, it does. Actually, thank you, maybe just for some clarity. So I'm Mary Davies, the uh. She's also, she also worked for interior health, Dr. Buddhist. Uh is medical health officer Lynn Miller. I don't know if she's still working as a mental health. But my point is to the chair is that she works for interior health. Tammy McClain is retired nurse practitioner. Who works for interior health and you have Ty Wright, who's a uh integrative response nurse. So these are five individuals that are either currently working. Or have worked for interior health, so they would represent interior health, in my opinion. That's what I'm getting at. So we're adding one more. And and the explanation was because. Because there's a lot of them at the table, and we wanted to make sure that these are the ones who would be voting if there was a motion brought forward. The the five names I just mentioned, are they voting members of the trail uh the safety task force?
Yep, counselor Benson. Ty Wright is not, he's a guest.
Okay.
Lynn Miller is one of the three community members on the committee. And Mary Davies is the T cat representation on the committee.
But they are all, besides Ty Wright, there's four of them that are voting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Mary Jones.
Any other questions? Okay, so the recommendation is that uh council that would imagine the communities of the task force committee. Terms of reference as attached to this report dated November ten twenty twenty five. That was carried, thank you.
I'd like to be just, I'll pause it.
Okay.
On the argument or the on the statements that I just made. Um thank you.
Okay, moving on. Sorry.
She just asked me if I wanted to.
Moving on to the Warfield Recreation Agreement. We have a report from the chief at the district officer advancing the new three-year recreation. And funding agreement between the village of Warfield and the city of Traum.
Uh I mean, it's funny, guys, if you're interested in your input.
Is there, is there a way to cancel it?
I, well, you could say that we're not going to move forward with that agreement. And they would be on the T R P.
No, you're only on an affirmation like. How it's how we're to work in case an affirmation.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's why in talking about the C I O. Of Warfield, then we had looked at a three year because we figure it's here with the place that the timeline would be.
Okay, there's no questions. We'll move on to the recommendation. The council provide authority to the C I O to enter into a three-year recreation funding agreement. With the village of Warfield effective January first twenty twenty six and ending December thirty first twenty twenty eight. With a year, three-year annual increment to the associated B. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. Uh and then we have a website design and development uh report. Our our communications and events manager, there's Samuel. I'm here if you have any questions.
But they have to go through the chair.
Does anybody have any questions? I um. I just wanted to ask about the. Uh agreement on the amount of the um contract. It has a baseline. Of seventy thousand, I think it said seventy thousand nine hundred and twenty. What it, what do you mean by a baseline? Could it be a change going forward or? If we wanted to add on, um it's a question, if we wanted to add on different uh. Things to the website, I guess you could say, different um. Functions, uh then the price could go up. And as well, that's only going to likely include a certain number of web pages. So if we wanted to say. Have more than five hundred web pages, which I wouldn't recommend, um then there could be a cost.
Okay. Counselor, thank you to the chair. Um now with this upgraded um website developer. Is there an opportunity to have mapping services with it? Like right now, you can go up on Roseland's and pull up their mapping infrastructure. It shows their infrastructure, it shows um the. Lot lines, all of that. So was, is this company able to provide that same sort of access to alleviate additional staff times when we are needing that information? Maybe it's kind of.
To the chair, thank you. As a little bit separate. Um so that is through a G I S company that would be assisting kind of getting that data input. Um I would imagine that the website host could um have that as a function, even if it is just a a hyperlink. To whatever the G I S system would be, um or portal, I guess you could say, but um. It's not necessarily the website host um or developers per view to to develop that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So any other questions? Okay, the recommendation is that council approved the award of the website design and development contract to graphically speaking services. With a base price of seventy thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars plus all applicable taxes, fees and charges. Okay, all those in favor? And that was carried. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to twenty twenty six utility rates.
No, no, these spreadsheets are big and so I. Think you probably had a hard time looking at them uh now on the screen, so I thought uh with this was a starting point, knowing that we would get some of these.
Somebody needed to click right before we get going, no pattern, like five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe just have a good break.
Well, three, three says yes.
Two, okay. You guys are in charge. You guys are in charge. Window. To exit.
That's sorry. Definitely, uh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Now I see that now. Okay, we're ready. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, it's that time here where we start the discussion on utilities. I know how pop Council Benson is. And so, uh, first of all, I wanted to say that um, you know, it's been really important for utilities that council has been as courageous as they have to have the rates increase as they have over the last several years. Um, I'm hoping that you continue to have that courage, at least in the water fund. We are seeing definitely some benefits inside the uh, the sewer fund, which is taking some pressure off. And again, I've got in my somewhat suggestions and these are just was a draft. Look at this. We will be coming back in November twenty fourth. Uh, the plan will be to have um, the managers do a little bit of a presentation on some of the work that we have been completing and what the plan is for for twenty twenty six as well. This is just sort of that pile of verbiage, just to get the flavor from the council so that um, staff can be going in a direction that um, that, that uh, you know, is um, efficient. So uh, as I don't know, again, too, we've got the large spreadsheet. I don't know how many of you, try to look at them online and try to kind of see what the results are. Um, the, the first kind of iteration of this is sort of a status quo, in the sense that uh, council has been really good about the rates they've gone. Uh, we can see that that has improved uh, overall. It's still uh, that ten percent increases that we have had. So we had considered or at the previous year, when council divided ten, that we would need a few more years of ten percent. And so that's uh, that's kind of what I have on the Schedule A of the Water Fund. And that's also Schedule B of the, the sewer fund. And um, just on that status quo, that would be something that, that tempted front, again, it's the forty eight dollars, very similar to what it was the, the years past. It does jump it at discount from four seven seven in twenty twenty five to the five, two five four five in twenty twenty six. That's sort of that forty eight dollar change, which is again, a net monthly change of about four dollars. Sewer rates, uh, again, a seven dollar rate increase, not significant. Um, and as council in the year previous had eliminated all garbage fees. And so that's now something that we're not above our utility rates at all. Um, so you can see as an overall change, it's about seven fifty percent as combined. And uh, one thing I thought was really important to remind, I know council, but to those that may be um, listening or watching later on this particular budget update is that um, the sewage treatment plant, when we talk about these two rates, that basically for transmission. So we do the transmission of the um, waste and then RDKB is responsible for the sewage treatment plant. And we have, that's where last year, there was a significant increase because they were doing that seventy plus million dollar upgrade to the sewage treatment plant. But sometimes people might compare to other communities or say, hey, I'm not paying, why am I paying this bunch of money? Can we pay more or less? One always has to remember that this is sort of that combined amount on the sewer, is that we pay this amount into the city for the work that we do. Uh, there's also a regional service that is, involves City of Roseland, Village of Warfield and the City of Trow. And that's what's kind of that sewage treatment plant and that being upgraded. So um, you know, that that rate increased last year significantly. And when we get to next, uh, to kind of based on the direction that council provides today, uh, we will, uh, you know, provide sort of like comparators. We know that our you know, other communities are also working on this. I think that my understanding is that there's a ten percent increase. We're both with sewer water up at the City of Boston. We're not quite sure yet what's happening in Casa Verde, but we'll try to get those numbers so that we can again, have that comparative community wise. The thing is really important is if you would show something, you know, oh, you're actually not paying that much for utilities. But you have to remember here, we need to bring in regional district because otherwise you're not getting the full picture of the cost. So that's um, that is with the parcel tax. Um, I'm suggesting that we need to roll the parcel tax into the rates and uh, that's kind of on the next slide. And remembering if I say rolling that parcel taxing, it doesn't mean that, you know, we increased the rates here and then you still have to pay a parcel tax at your, on your, on your property taxes. That would be the elimination of that parsing tax. So again, it's netting really is zero in the sense in the first year. In fact, as I kind of mentioned in my next slide, there's actually a decrease because um, we don't provide a discounts later. We don't provide a discount of taxes. We have more of a, if you don't pay by this date, then you get a penalty kind of thing, right? So if you're moving in the parcel tax into the rates, um, there uh, there is a benefit of this year of about ten dollars of uh, of it being discounted that where otherwise it wouldn't have, otherwise uh, stays on as a parcel tax. Um, it does bump up that rate and then um, the other thing in my schedule is that it actually allows for a quicker um, mo- movement down from ten percent down to five. So again, we'll talk about it and about that later. But right now, as a minimum sort of thing, asking council, as we move forward, that we need about a ten percent uh, to increase in water. Like I said, sewer is much more inflationary. The reserve itself is way more sustainable in the work that we do. And that's really a focus has been on. So my, my next slide, uh, this is just sort of a quick overview because the, the high level kind of math hasn't, detailed math hasn't been done, but this is just sort of if uh, someone was to open up their tax, other utility notice in early January, I'm like, what, what is going on? What, you know, how can it possibly be that we're increasing the uh, the taxes by that much money or the utility rate that I have found? And then just trying to be, be clear here, this is a ten percent increase to the water rates, um, adding in with a hundred fifty dollars, you know? Water parcel tax, then also subtracting, you know, the fact that the, you get a uh, net result of a ten percent kind of break in the current year, uh, which would be about two percent overall, uh, break on on the water rate. So you're, in theory, by doing this, you're paying about eight percent in twenty twenty. At twenty twenty six. And then again, remembering that when you get your tax, they'll be seeing uh, may, that it also dropped that hundred fifty. So it's sort of a timing difference. You get a bit of a benefit for taxpayer in closing that, the uh, the parcel tax off. Um, if we're not going to use the parcel tax, we will have to do some work on the parcel tax, uh, because it's been in place for a very, very long time. There's new requirements for the parcel taxes, you know, efforts involved in that. And that's one of the reasons that I think overall, uh, it should just be into, uh, into the rates, the water rate itself. Uh, one of the reasons that in Trail was one of those communities saw a lot in the little smaller communities is that it wasn't one time, a number of years ago, and I may have discussed this, I may be repeating myself, but there was communities that didn't have enough taxes to actually get the full benefit of the homeowner grant that the province had released. So what communities would do then is they can say, well, let's add a parcel tax because then the parcel tax becomes one of those items that gets added to your taxation. So you could actually increase a, a homeowner's taxes, but they would actually pay less because the homeowner grant would kind of almost nullify it, right? And so that was something that was common and uh, you see that quite a bit or have seen it quite a bit in the smaller municipalities in our region in particular that I've worked with. And that's not a, a factor today. The taxes are much higher than what the homeowner grant is. So you uh, don't see a situation where someone has taxes that uh, are not getting a recovery from the homeowner grant. And you might say, well, what does that mean? It's like, well, if your homeowner grants seven hundred and seventy dollars, but your taxes are only at six fifty, you're kind of leaving a hundred and twenty dollars on the table. So that was sort of a way of saying, well, let's increase that to that amount. The taxpayer itself, yeah, well, it was, it was a tool. The captains, the captains do these sorts of things, right? So quite the best, the best result for the, for the resident. So that was calculated well. Again, that's something of the past and it isn't changing. It's also uh, come in line with the parcel tax having to have like a end date and a purpose and, and that sort of structure. So that's, that's sort of uh, what's going on there. Again, in this particular idea here, you're also seeing the sewer rates um, hitting um, that same amount at two point seven five percent or seven dollars. So nothing's changing on the sewer rate. Um, this particular uh, second option that I was looking at, so the status quo, uh, also looked at uh, how we're doing and how in the previous year, council had moved over money um, out of the taxation component into water fund from the sewer fund. And I think that there, you know, as we see the results, the sewer fund is still very healthy and we can see the in, in both, you know, in particular in the Schedule B that uh, you know, it's, it's climbing as you get out to the year twenty forty, you've got almost three, three point two seven million dollars in it. So that's one of the ones that, uh, you know, could go lower on inflation, but I think that, that another way of looking at this is, well, why don't we reallocate some of this taxation funding that we're already putting into these utilities and put it more into the water fund. And we could go further and we can, in fact, we can eliminate it and we can put all of it in to the water fund. That would help take off some pressure. Um, you can see under Schedule A, just by staying along that, you know, we in twenty twenty, twenty thirty four, we dip it into a negative. Uh, then we start climbing out again. Um, if we see status quo, however, if we will, uh, Schedule C for water, um, we would be able to see that we actually get into, yes, we got down, but we're, we're never below um, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve as we sort of build the reserve up over time. Uh, this particular uh, suggestion that I thought has a ten percent in twenty twenty eight, forty six in twenty twenty seven, and then twenty twenty eight, you drop down to five percent and that's sort of ongoing. Now, it's not a bigger number, but um, it also really makes the reserve healthier. And we also know that by the time we get to twenty twenty eight, that we have paid off the debt for water. So it's another factor that's really helping. And again, uh, the additional funds, uh, you know, may not seem like a lot. I'm, I was looking at fifty thousand dollars, sort of where the um, the amount was that we were allocating over from uh, the sewer taxation allocation to the water. You know, again, we could, could do a bit more. Um, again, in fact, it might be like more the sewer reserve is healthy enough. We can just put all the taxation money into, into the water. Um, then we, I wanted to put that on fire here, maybe explain to anyone who has any questions. Yes, it looks like a big increase on your utility bill, which is transfer uh, rate off. Um, but you would also again, very short order here and three months later, you're getting a, a break by the taxation. So it's just a timing difference as far as I could. Um, I wanted to talk about sort of some of the utility notes for, for water in twenty twenty six. Uh, the water master plan updating project is out for ten, so we will have answers in twenty twenty six. Uh, it's been one of those ones that's frustrating, first timing goes, but that's just where we're at today. And I think we communicated that over the last number of quarterly updates, uh, result being here that we know that we will have worked on it and have some better understanding of what the priorities are in the water fund, especially when you know right now that the biggest one is the Charles Lake Twinning. Done a lot of work towards that. We have built up the reserve for that. We also um, I want to move forward. There's a couple of components that we're working on right now. One is surveying in the area, making sure that we can have the water line go where we need it to go. Uh, but we're also know that we've got that application for the problems for, for, for funding this project. Again, with them just completing the uh, PCG uh, strike, it may take a lot for those sorts of uh, results to come along on our rats. And we, we know that we're committed. We also know that um, and we're also been continuing to use the Community Works Fund that we get is for the mall into water. And we do have a bit of reserve, but we're also kind of committing each amount that we get. We didn't have one in twenty twenty. We didn't use it in twenty twenty five because we knew that we were going to double it up to try to deal with the uh, the, the, this major project of the Charles Lake. So that's why if you're looking at a saving, like, heck, there was nothing in twenty twenty five, but in twenty twenty six, there's eight hundred and some odd thousand and drops down to four. So we kind of bundled that last year to kind of again, take pressure off with the rates and to make sure the funding's available for this major, major, major project. But you will note that after we get out in a couple of years, um, you know, we've been twenty twenty six, we've got some carry forwards, we've got some carry forwards for the um, worked at the skating system. We also have some work on the Bear Creek. Some of the work is, is being done now, but we'll continue. And we had to carry forward the water master plan update. And um, we also have a bit of water treatment equipment uh, going as well. Uh, and I talked about that in my, in kind of in the points that I put out in the, in the bulletin. Uh, so you know, not a big year this year. Obviously, the start of twenty twenty six is this major part of, and that leads into your, it's a two-year budget. And we also need to remember that we have um, some tad nak rest for our work to do in twenty twenty six. So you can see quite a bit of pressure. Uh, I did pump in in twenty twenty eight only a million dollars, but you can notice that under the row uh, thirty eight, that we had the two million kind of ongoing, because that's sort of what we need to be putting into the improvement of our water system each year. And that's why, as you start to see out in these graphs, as we get over to then for five, twenty thirty six with these increases and then uh, you know, a, a dip down that we start to have basically enough funding every year after operations and, and it gets a bit more expensive here. Because we pump out of Columbia into a water treatment plant and then we'll, and then distribute. So one has to always be aware that uh, the age of that facility, what I'm calling capital works are going to do. Um, and so, you know, the other thing that isn't in our plans right now, and as we kind of discussed earlier, we are in those conversations with the Village of Warfield, what does that look like? I'm providing them water. Uh, regardless of that, I'm told from staff is that the Charles Lake twenty raw job needs to be done. So that project is something that needs to be undertaken regardless. In fact, probably even higher prioritization, having that worked on if you're going to ever provide water to Warfield. Um, that would be a whole different project. You would expect, uh, you know, if we were to undertake that, if it would be some, you know, work with the, if the province and federal government to do that, it makes a lot of sense for me for us to be able to provide that water. You know, they have a reservoir already. We, we need to pump the water there, but you have the ability at our water treatment plant to provide enough water. Plus, the idea of getting staffing, so Warfield was to look at trying to build a twelve or fourteen million dollar water treatment plant. You now then have to staff it and the equipment, the operating costs to go with that. So I think that would be a selling point or a feature that if we were trying to work through any type of uh, motivation with. Think that that needs to be, you know, be brought forward and give you savings for the province, I think, and and so those are the uh key points that I would be probably trying to to raise if you're in that negotiating. Or trying to like, hey, here's a way that we can work together and and provide services uh we get communities on, so. I know it's a bit of an aside, I just wanted to say, nothing is in here uh in this budget for this year, right now, we're sort of focusing on uh what is supposed to be the kickoff for the start of the Charles Lake. On the uh you had two, if there's any questions, please interrupt me, um and then on the sewer budget utility, uh we had talked about this last year, where. We're focusing on the areas, and I think that you could send me out, and we would have seen the media releases about the different areas that we've been doing in Shaver's Bench about. I was in that sort of thing to uh upgrade areas that are either, you know, had collapses or that are bottlenecks. And when I say that, meaning that you've got um a a situation that doesn't allow the relining, that you need to repair those so that. Uh this, you know, the the benefit of having this technology and being the reline in place. Is uh since hugely significant, especially with the cost of asphalt and equipment, so if we can um have a a two-block section, but then at the intersection, it's broken down. If we go in and fix that, then we can maybe go on for another third block, so that's sort of what that work is about, and that's what we have been focusing on. And that's where the budget sort of pans out a a a year of work on repairs. Uh fun repairs and upgrades, uh and then the following year being a year where we would bring in someone to do the relining. So that's sort of where you look at that budget, it's pretty consistent, like I said, I feel very strong that uh that we're improving in that particular utility. And the funding that is in place is is uh is adequate, and so therefore kind of that inflationary increase each year is probably all that we need. And that I did know that I adjusted the sewer uh from the three percent we had. Yeah, previous years, and the function that's down to two point seven five, and I know that makes the, you know, but you do see that there's uh savings if you're even at quarter point every. Every four years, you're one percent less than you would be, that would be proposed even in prior years, so it's definitely um uh a utility that's in a good spot. The um one other component there that they were talking about is just on the small purchases at twenty twenty six, uh we want to get a sewer camera for the tractor truck. And then the upgrade of the Clark Street's uh station skid, skated communication to put. And when we get the numbers, that's why I felt comfortable that taking another uh much like we did last year, taking some, something, taking additional fifty out of uh. The sewer utility and putting it over to water. Uh one thing that we have also done, and that council can also consider when we get there is, you know, depending on how the year end uh ends up, we have. Had a couple of years where we've said, hey, let's put additional funding into the water reserve, depending on what results are at the end of uh at the end of that budget year. So um I'm certainly interested in, while it's concerns, questions?
Also handsome, or sorry Benson.
Thank you, through the chair, uh what is GATA communication equipment?
You want to take that one out?
Sure.
To the chair, it's the operating system that allows the operators to monitor. Yeah, so um. Anyway, that's, I know that's, there's a skating machine, you're all pretty quiet today as far as.
Um thank you, through the chair, um in regards to where our interest income is on um these reserve balances, I mean, you. We were thinking, you know, can we pull money over? I mean, both of our interest revenues on both the water and sewer, you know, definitely have that room just on interest alone that we. Moving that money over from sewer to water.
Yep.
You know, there's there's definitely opportunity there, and then the tax contribution to sewer, now it it. I'm just looking, it doesn't ever change, it's always the same amount?
Yeah, so we've kind of had a set amount in the budget that you have, um maybe they would have seen that elevation in there, so we got money that goes to the to the general. Um equipment reserve, and we've got general capital fund, and then we've got amounts that go to sewer and water, now again, last year, we just sort of uh. Reallocated, kept the mouth the same, uh because obviously, if you're going to increase, you can, but that puts pressure on the overall taxation news, and uh like I said, for right now. Feeling, you know, we're we're moving very much in the right direction, like I said, it's taken a lot of courage for council to to um to move on as they have on the rates. But I just really know that if we don't, then we end up in reserve, and there's nothing wrong with borrowing funds. Uh but when I look at what kind of ongoing annual amount of capital we need to do, this isn't even, hey, we have an eight million dollar project that comes along and we need to borrow, much like. You know, the seventy eight million dollar project that uh the RDKB did, there was just really no way to kind of expect that you would have saved up that much money and reserve to be able to pay for that. So those are, you know, sort of those generational major projects that you would borrow from, I would suggest that if we were hopefully beginning on rampant, you were working with. Um Warfield, that would be something that we go, maybe you'll borrow, and say, okay, Warfield, this is your debt to help, you know, put whatever grant offsetting, and then part of a. A taxable Warfield, this would be you, uh really being those uh entities only having to fund sort of enough great to the largest system.
Um Colin, how much was the provincial grant application?
Uh for the four point five million. And yeah, that would be huge, but it's an unknown, and we know that uh we we need to get on this project and and uh we also know that. You know, it'll be totally over prescribed as far as how many communities live there, I'll put down his projects for.
Okay. You're any other questions? Just received this information.
Well, again, uh would be good to get some feedback, uh just to to be efficient with staff time, um you know, probably, yeah, just thinking if I'm looking at the group, the. Easy question of doing some of the allocation of the tax revenue between sewer and water probably is a something easy for council to say, yes, we think that that's a good idea. Um I would also, I hope.
Yeah, I'm just looking back and you're. Again, there's a lot of numbers, and uh my uh accounting is a bit dated.
Okay.
Uh I'm looking at the water rate, uh we're at the proposed twenty twenty six residential utility and water rate.
Yes.
Uh water rate after discount, I mean, you're looking at thirty nine point two percent, and that's including the parcel tax, so I think a little more explanation on the parcel tax, I don't. I don't like that parcel tax, is there, are we getting rid of it?
Yes, and that's what, that's what I'm saying, so, but um council council will still be the the money that we get from the parcel tax, so, and that's why the parcel tax, if you're looking at the sheets under the revenue side. Uh that will be down um under uh rows fifty two to fifty six, sort of thing kind of shows you what that uh amount is. Uh so currently, you know, we've got our revenue from our fees or utility rates, it's oh, you know, basically get a ten percent increase, you'd be about two point two million dollars. Uh we have the metered revenues, because we do have some properties on the earth, um you can see the parcel taxes at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars there. And uh then we had the contribution underlying fifty six is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh of taxation uh that we again bumped up last year. So that's on uh form A, so then if you look at form C. Uh you will see that in that same category that you've got. Revenue from fees all of a sudden goes to two point seven. Uh your your meter revenue also uh, your meter revenue is at two fifteen. You can see that we got one year left of the of the parcel tax, but that's that um specific specified area where they did it over needed, I believe, that that's a local improvement. So that's uh that would be something that would not be needed funded into the future, but that's why it drops from the five twenty down to sixteen, so. Um and then again, bumping up the contribution, tax contribution to water from one thirty to one eighty, so that's fifty. So uh again, the parcel tax, you're right, it's a timing difference, the rate will increase. Uh on the utilities, but then when you got your tax, you would get that belief from that in the in the taxes, and like I said, in fact, it would be more of a, you know, seven hundred and fifty going on to the. Utility rate would be about one forty, if you pay by the discounts or the thing, so there is a bit of a um a sweetener there, I guess we could say, of doing it. Uh otherwise, the numbers basically are are pretty close to each other as far as where you're 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 coming out on the. On that, so we're at three oh five two and five nine, three one oh two, and that and then basically the difference being the fifty thousand that we're adding on the tax contribution. As far as revenue, hopefully to that, hopefully that explains.
Yeah, no, it helps a bit, it's a little bit fuzzy, but thank you.
Yeah, so even if you were saying, yeah, maybe I feel comfortable with where we're going with the sewer rate, uh yeah, I'm comfortable with what's happening with the um. Allocation of. Current taxation over to water from sewer, and then the the not the tougher ones, but the ones that. Either I I wouldn't want to get some direction, I feel like, no, I like the parcel tax saying where it is, leave it, then that's something that helps me to move forward. And then also just the the ten percent increase that I'm proposing for water again this year, it kind of wears that land with with council, so that's that's the other thing. Remember, when I say direction, if you're like, hey, I would like to see what this percentage or that percentage looks like, or you know, those are the things that I can bring back. Um from the November twenty fourth, knowing that the plan would be that by December eighth, we're kind of ready to be, so. There are times, so this is just sort of that, hey, staff, I want to see a bit more of this, but I want to understand that.
Um can we look at what an eight percent would be with that fifty thousand dollar movement from sewer to water?
Yeah, absolutely. Just be with me.
Direction was double digits.
Generous, I was a little sad, nah. Um so it seems like you pulled this one up for you.
And might I also suggest maybe someone, people that are budgeting though for their water and sewer, knowing that there's an additional hundred and fifty being tapped on. Come this year, I mean, I think people need to know what another budgeting for that.
Agree, and 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 but again, the. It's not easy, and as as counsel casual talk about, it's really communicating this, where you, someone opens up that thing and says, what's happening in that city hall? Just making sure, you know, hey, by the way, letting you know that uh you in June, like in a few months here, your your tax bill is going, you know, that parcel tax will be off your tax bill, so.
Right, and you're actually going to save ten bucks by putting into this instead of having.
If you pay, if you pay on time for that.
Right, so I guess the question is making sure people have enough time to adequately budget that extra hundred and fifty that they were maybe planning to pay come July.
Yeah, you know, it's fair, and and I think that this is part of that communication that uh uh that our manager communications talked about. Uh uh tried to work on, we had a number of people that had started on the prepayment plan, and so it's kind of making sure, because that's a real benefit if someone serves, think, hey, this costs me this, but I'm gonna put. Eighty dollars or a hundred dollars into it, uh you know, for X amount of months, then it makes it that much easier to not have to come up with the funds at that time. Uh so you had asked about what happens if we change. So the dollar amount, so that says six fifty three compared to what I already opposed of the posing. Yeah, so that's six fifty three, so that. That two percent difference is basically eleven dollars of, you know, on that overall. And um but the more important thing, I think we've talked about this, is just the um the amazingness of. Can I say that means? Um the the factor of of dealing with uh compounding, right? It's it's compounding, it it really is something, because you you wouldn't think that 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 two percent change would have that much, and in fact, you can see that by the time that you get out, in fact. Trying to look at, even though I've got too many spreadsheets open. I'm still sure. So if you were looking at your schedules. And then just to, you know, moving at the reserve balance, so that would be in row. Eighteen, so if you go eighteen under AH or under where that C is, you can see that uh the reserve balance, if you were that two percent. Change goes from uh one point seven five three million to nine nine hundred and thirty one thousand, so you're you're down about. Eight hundred thousand dollars in revenues, and you can see where the reserve gets down into the fifty four uh the two thousand dollar balance, so that's just. Again, that's the compounding of of things.
So the, does this all change again if we get the land? The four point five million?
Well.
Would it look different?
Well, what, yeah, I mean, it 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 certainly would, a couple of us, I just wondered if you were to get the grant, so you got the four point five million dollars. My opinion would be is that then you would be able to lower the future rates into an inflationary kind of component rate. Uh like I said, right now, we've got twenty twenty six, twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, and then the water debt is only off. And even as we go out, the the two million dollars that I have as a placeholder, and I try to uh add an inflationary factor, so that it's not just two million. Forever, but you can see by, you know, basically that two million is at to almost three million uh by the time you get out, just based on inflationary. Costs, so trying to make sure that the cog isn't. But that's the part that's also that we haven't had, and I know that we've talked to council to try to. Solidify is that, what's that water master plan, because I have a feeling that this is sort of an ongoing amount, and you may end up with like, well, let's spend three million this year and and one million next year, you have some ability to kind of plan things out. But that's just why I sort of bumped this in, saying, as a minimum, we should be producing about two million dollars of rate revenue. That covers the operating expense and then helps fund the capitals. Uh yes, we'll obviously always be trying to. You know, search for grants, uh find partners, find efficiencies, but uh this this is kind of that factor, and. For the work that council has done, uh we're very close, and this council will be the, you know, a council that is courageous enough to get the rates up, when it's starting to get sustainable. But it is fascinating that, you know, that change of two percent, uh which you wouldn't think, it's like it's eleven dollars um change to the homeowner, you know. Again, remembering, I'm only focused on the homeowner, we have lots of them, it affects different people differently, so that may be unfair, but that's eleven dollars, that's uh that that homeowner. How the effect it is on the actual balance as we go out, and it um it's um creates um. You know, a significant difference.
And you know, I know we have a lot of projects that we um need to do, because it's a necessity, right? And uh it never fails when we get into these projects, something always shows up that we weren't expecting, that raised us and. Yeah, another ten percent seems like uh pretty impressive, but I almost feel like it's. Just preparing us for the future.
Well, and that's, and and I think that that's sort of what I'm saying is that when before, even before we started. You were looking at only putting in a couple hundred thousand dollars into the reserve, so even now, we're we're starting to get to a number where you're almost at a, you know, a million dollars, even last year's, you know, the increases you've done, we were. Within the about six hundred and fifty thousand, now we're at eight hundred, then we're at a million, and then all of a sudden, the decades paid off, now you're, you know, you're you're in a much more um. Uh yeah, inflationary, because now you are increasing five percent, don't get me wrong, it's almost on me that you're at a bigger number, so if you're, you know, it's a lower percentage, but on a bigger number, that's that's, well, it's still gonna have an effect. Uh and this is where I also think is really important is is being able to show sort of what our partners are doing. We're in different, you know, some some are in different phases, uh I know that uh you'll. The fact that. the fact that the RDKB was able to get the grant, now I appreciate that the grant was huge, but the cost of construction was even larger over that point in time. But if you had to build that from scratch to be able to borrow that whole amount, and this is where so many communities, um Kimberly's another one that had to upgrade their sewage stream plans, they also got a grant, but these other communities and trying to fund these major, major upgrades because of the requirements of the ministry of sorry, it was before, we're, you know, what you treat it, going back into the Columbia or whatever, wherever that you're dealing with has to be at a standard that it's healthy, and then that's where uh upgrading these systems with new technology is great. Um I'm just even thinking about as an example, I don't know if you read the paper, but you know, Casa Fair spent six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on some new um abilities to deal with the odor from their uh um how they deal with sewage, they, you know, and has worked, right? And so you've you've spent that kind of money, so it's not a loss on us, but it is one of those things that these capital projects are expensive. Um but as a minimum, I really felt we're committing here trails that we needed to get the rates up on on the water. Sewer, like I said, is in a healthy place, and uh I think that like I said, it's courageous to do that, and I don't know how many of you uh when you're in the grocery store, or you have a dinner party, or at the summer barbecue sort of thing, and everyone comes and says to you, says, hey, my water raise has gone up, you know, you know, I don't know how many people get how how often do you get a a conversation saying, I don't like what you're doing with the, you know, the the rate increases, don't get me wrong, I understand, and there are a lot of people in our community that have fixed incomes, but uh kind of that forty eight dollars is is it's not lost on me. But if it allows for a system that allows a resident or a business to have the the water that we supply, and then also on the sewer side, being asked to be able to transmit it away. I I usually find that more people, most people are paying more for their phone plans than they are for now the fact that they're what they're paying on the utility rate anyway. So it's something that's really uh a key infrastructure, also visible, a lot of times, you just expect to turn on that tap and the water to come out, and you expect to flush that toilet, that the the waste goes away. So it is sort of hidden, but uh I just know that um we're heading in the right direction. And um and again, even if council decided to go with eight, I'm not, you know, these are all decisions, but you can see what the the compounding effect is. Um and even in the post, those number of years here, it does mean that we we dip. We also take a look at this every year, we see like, hey, we have, you know, do we have some taxation can add to it, or do we uh do we get a grant? So those are all kind of wild cards that couldn't do it.
Through the chair, do we need to increase the sewage one for if it's if it's just the transmission that we're passed on, do we need to raise it?
No, again, I was just just saying in one year kind of thing, yeah, so it's so so for example, if we if we said zero for this.
Yeah, but it was zero, but we kept and we kept the ten for the water, that's where the.
Yep. Now, you're so your savings is seven dollars, right? So that's kind of what, you know, well, no, I mean, it's important, I understand there's there's pressure, so um you're to do that. Again, so that would be, if you were looking at your D spreadsheet? So yes, you save that seven dollars this year, um that is not a significant amount, it looks like right here, so that mean of, so having a two point to eight million, you're at two point one four, so that certainly we could do zero, if that's something that sort of takes some fun to off of, but you know, you get a the discount on the parcel tax, and then you also don't have to pay any use in sewer, now you're kind of um.
And I'm just thinking the, I think the why on the water side is much easier to explain than an increase on the the sewer side when um yeah. Does that make sense?
It does. That again, and I see we talk about the compounding and and the fact that it's a fascinating that that even that two point seven five and they want one year, doesn't have that much effect, when you've got only back increases from lower rates, so.
Yeah.
But that's a suggestion, so it sounds like maybe come back with, uh I mean, I showed you here what those results over, but um is a is it a comfort level for council that I would, as a minimum, be reallocating those taxes, it sounds like?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like maybe a zero for the sewer utility, uh a ten for the a ten, a ten and an eight for uh for the uh I can bring off a ten and an eight, so you guys can look at that.
Sure.
And the parcel tax, uh you're okay with uh ruling that into the rates? They're kind of a, again.
And then just communicate it right?
Yes.
Like, you're going to be so happy.
So could you maybe just explain, because I know that that parcel tax is really a hard thought for one of them, this due to is a really fair way to distribution for many, many years, and you're suggesting we get rid of it, I was wondering. Like you mentioned, some changes to it and stuff like that, so I was just, could you expand on that a bit, because I just recall that one model is being a more equitable word. Yeah, just um well, and and since we don't have meters. Yeah, well, and with the parcel tax, uh I guess what I would say is that if you're, you know, per home, one of the challenges that you you know, when you talk about it, we'll aside here, but if you talk about, you know, leaders or leader in, right? Um one of the challenges that you go back to is that even if you mean it or not, you still need the same amount of money to pay for the capital. And so what my historical and looking at these, especially on residential, is that uh you would need such a high flat fee sort of thing, uh and then you would only have a component of that, because you you wouldn't want to have, well, hey, if we're on meters, I use less water, then all of a sudden I don't have my money to pay for capital, right? And then they go, well, how how to jack the meter rate up? So what what we found is that you would need, you know, a, you know, probably an eighty percent flat rate. So you'd be saying, hey, we need five hundred dollars in the flat rate. And then, you know, my family of four is going to pay more on the meter rate, so I might pay a hundred dollars on the meter rate, so now I'm at, you know, five hundred. Whereas the the widow beside me, they'll be at fifty dollars or something, right? And so then that's where that kind of balance goes on of distributing. But you need such a high flat fee to be able to continue to um have the capital money. That's one of the challenges that you face, because you don't want to have everyone just say, let's stop using water, and then I don't have any money to be able to operate it. And the cost for us historically is that the cost to put a feeders to every home and then the billing, and then having to hire a staff person to then put out notices and that sort of thing. So the flat fee is is um is something that that is 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 acceptable, but how we get there, counselor? But the the one challenge that does happen there is that, and we talked about it, I think even last year, new four, is that because that flat tax has been there and has now changed, then it's something that also isn't sort of getting that, just even that whatever that increase is, even inflationary, you're not getting any inflationary benefit from uh that being in the rate, right?
And that's something that probably should have been looked at.
Well, it should have been looked at, yeah. And again, the parcel tax has has just been something that hasn't as much criteria goes, I'm not sure it's it's in line.
The problem, right? Thank you.
Okay, Mia Jones, and you know, it seems to be, come back with some more expressions, because I know you like those.
And maybe we'll hear about the Doran's.
Yeah, well, if that is possible, I I I'm thinking that grant probably won't get announced until but thirty seven. Well, yeah. But no, uh um thank you, thank you for your time, and if anything, we have more questions.
Thank you for your work and your passion, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, uh we will move on to uh I see now the reports, uh question period. History people online. And so if anybody would like to ask a question, if you could please use the raise your hand function? The period be any questions?
Okay.
So I just need a motion that council um resolved to rise from the committee of the whole place in cube. I just care. And then I need a resolution to exclude the public, recess a public meeting till six o'clock, and immediately beam into the closed session. And the resolution is that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter, the public be excluded from this portion of the meeting as susceptible to being considered relates to the following. The community charter section ninety one B, the acquisition disposition and at fourth creation of land or improvements. If the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interest of the municipality. And community charter section ninety one L, discussions with municipal officers and and employees respecting municipal objections, ledgers and progress reports for the purpose of recurring an annual report under section ninety eight, annual municipal reports and further. That the public portion of the meeting will recessed until six o'clock P M. And further, that council immediately resolved into the closed function of the meeting. Thank you, all those in favor. And that was carried, thank you.